I got Lisa's, I got Lynn's presentation.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with the oath of meetings law notification and adopt the agenda. If you'd all please stand with me and do the pledge of the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united states, and indivisible, universal, and just. Okay, before we jump into the administration of oath of office, we'd like to bring your attention to the district website. Some people have had questions about finding the agendas, meeting recaps, and then handouts. So Kathy, if you can walk us through where to go.
Sure, so if you go to www.wittinell.com, this is our main website. And at the top, right-hand side, you'll see some choices. If you take the cursor and go over district, you'll get a drop-down menu. Under Board of Education, you're going to want to choose Agenda and Minutes. So that's going to bring up our schedule of when the meetings are. There are several things on this page. One thing, on the right-hand side, you'll find Board Briefs. So Board Briefs are immediately after the board meeting. So like if we have an action meeting on a Monday, on Tuesday or Wednesday, I'll have the Board Briefs done and we'll put the Board Briefs up. They're not approved minutes, but it will tell you basically what happened at the meeting and the type of motions that were made. It'll give you an idea of what happened at the meeting. If you want more specific information about the meeting, then you can actually open the Agenda Packet from that meeting. So the Board Briefs are on the right-hand side and all you have to do is click on any one of them. Like if you clicked on April 16th, it'll bring up the Board Brief from that meeting. Also on this page are going to be your Agenda Packet. So tonight's packet is right here under April 23rd, Board of Education Meeting. And you would click on Agenda/Packet and it's going to open up your Board Packet for tonight's meeting. Another thing that we have added to this page is a column called Handouts. So many times at meetings like tonight, we're doing a student achievement presentation. So tomorrow, I will put that presentation under Handouts. So that if you want to go back and you want to look at what was done at the meeting, if there was anything handed out, you can look at those things. And also, once the minutes are approved, the minutes are also posted there for each board meeting. So everything that you need in regards to agendas and minutes are on that page. One other thing that you can look at is under Schedule. Under Board of Education, if you pull up the Board Schedule, we'll do a quick link to the meeting videos on those. So tomorrow, once the video is uploaded to YouTube, I'll post a link to that video under the Schedule so that you can quickly watch the videos if you would like to.
Okay. Thank you Kathy, and I want to thank Jack and Chris Komp and Kathy and Dr. Olson for all the time putting this together. Community, if you see this and you're utilizing it, if you have any questions or suggestions on ways to improve it or information you'd like, please contact us and we'll work with them to try to get that out there. So thank you. Now moving on to administration of oath of office to newly elected board members. This will be for Quinn and Kevin.
So I.
I. Quinn Burnett.
Kevin Stahoviac.
Having been elected or appointed to the Office of School Board Member.
Having been elected or appointed to the Office of School Board Member.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now move on to the annual organization of the Board, the election of officers. Gonna be chaired by Nancy Zabrowski, our senior board member.
All right, so we need to elect President, Vice President, Clerk, and Treasurer. So do we have any nominations for President?
I need to nominate Jonathan Kagle.
Jonathan. Do we have any other nominations for President? And the last time, any other nominations for President? All right, Jonathan, since you're the only nomination, do you accept that?
I do accept.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a second nomination?
I don't think we do.
I don't think so.
No? Okay, good, thank you.
And then Vice President, any nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Quinn Burnett.
Are there any other nominations? Other nominations? Quinn, do you accept?
I do.
All right, all in favor of Quinn, Vice President?
Aye.
Treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Stephanie Richter.
Any other nominations? Other nominations? Stephanie, do you accept?
Yes.
All right, and we can affirm Stephanie's nomination by saying aye.
Aye.
And finally Clerk.
I nominate Kevin Stahoviac.
Kevin, do you accept?
Yes.
Any other nominations? Other nominations? All right, same thing with Kevin?
Aye.
Thank you.
A lot of drama there.
There was suspense.
So the officers stay the same as they were in the past.
Okay, thank you. Now on to five appointments, delegates, liaisons, and committees. We went through and discussed, with the referendum coming, we'd like to put more of an emphasis on being engaged with the PTOs, with the buildings, working with the principals, to make sure that the information is coming from the Board to the administrators, the teachers, the parents in the meeting, so they're not hearing through the woodwork. So what we've done is Kevin has agreed to be the liaison to Hills Corners Elementary and work with Lori Comis and the staff there and the PTO to keep the information going. Quinn will do the same as he has been with Edgerton. And then Stephanie will take over at the middle school as a liaison there. And again, they rejuvenated the PTO this year, so she'll work with them as we go through the future to build that communication. John and Stephen will duly work at the high school, being that they both have children here and they're already involved and engaged with it, so it made sense for that. As far as the delegates and committees go, we're not going to make any changes to the committees now. Since we're not utilizing them as much as we were before, we're going to keep that static. We'll see how things go, if we need to change things in the future, we can. Delegates, so Nancy will stay on as the Greenfield Park and Rec liaison for the Board. And what we'll also do is she'll start reporting as part of reports if there's ever anything going on with Greenfield Park and Rec to let us know what's going on, similar to Quinn does with SWSA. If there's nothing, it'll be nothing, but this way we'll start getting some more information from that. I'll be doing the same with the Hills Corners Park and Rec, giving information and updates on that. And then as far as the other liaisons go, I think we're pretty set now. We've talked about possibly CISA, potentially looking at that. So we'll do some more discussion, we don't have to make that decision tonight, but we'll make some more discussion in the future for that. Anybody have any ideas, thoughts, things they'd like to be involved with that they aren't currently? As far as delegates or liaisons go? Correct. You want to continue with the SWSA?
You will have me, yes.
Yep.
Unless someone else wants to. It is a very rewarding group, get a lot of information. It's well worth whatever we pay to go there, it is.
Well, and anyone can go, right? You would just, you're the liaison to report back, but.
Yeah, it means our 7:30 morning to 9 o'clock the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay. Okay, so anything else? Kathy, are we missing anything?
The only thing that I'm wondering about is the CISA delegate because they have their meeting the middle of May usually, that Organization Board of.
Sure.
So maybe.
We can, we can look at that and either, we'll see what Kevin's schedule is like, if he can, maybe I can, we can, we'll make it work. Absolutely, yeah.
Kevin's going to be a delegate to WSAB.
Would you like to?
Sure.
Continue as that?
Yeah.
And then the alternate, you can put me as the alternate. Nancy, would you like to be the alternate?
My schedules, especially next January, will be really difficult to get away, so.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, thank you all for that. And now we'll move on to comments from the audience regarding Agenda items. For Policy 0167.3, this is the only time public participation is permitted. Comments are limited to current Agenda items. Anyone having legitimate interest in an Agenda item may participate. Attendees must register their intention to speak upon their arrival at the meeting. Participants are to preface their comments by announcing their name and address and group affiliation when appropriate. Comments are limited to three minutes unless extended by the Board President and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Comments are to be directed to the Board, no person may address or question Board members individually. And any person or group wishing to have an item considered for the Agenda shall submit their request to the Superintendent no later than 14 calendar days prior to the meeting. Have any comments tonight? Okay, thank you. Moving on now to gifts, donations, recognition, student and staff spotlight. A will be Kohl's Field Trip Grants.
You just want to come up Lori and just explain it a little bit. She's like, whoop.
So we had the opportunity to apply for Kohl's Field Trip Grants.
What's that add Lori?
So we had the opportunity to apply for the Kohl's Field Trip Grants. The principal has to complete the application and we were really lucky to hear the news that three of our field trips were granted. Our fifth graders have been going to JA Biz Town the last two or three years now. So $1,000 for that, $1,000 for our fourth and fifth graders to go to the art museum. That's a collaborative trip that also involves the, going to the symphony. And then the third trip is for third grade to Discovery World and that corresponds with their science curriculum. So $1,000 for each of those and that's a good deal and helps the parents and helps us go to get out in the community, so.
Is this just for HCE or is it for all our elementarys?
It's just for HCE, it has to be applied at the school level.
Congratulations.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, that's exciting. Okay, and then B, student recognition?
Oh, okay, so we had, we had a student who, I won't spoil the whole surprise for next week, but was going to be recognized today related to ACT, I'll leave it at that, but had a conflict tonight and so will come at the next board meeting and so that what. We're also going to in May recognize, we've had a lot of students, in fact, we have our DECA students right now at the International Conference right now, so we've had, our forensics team went off to state. So we want to organize all of our teams and groups that went off to state, both athletic and non-athletic clubs. And so we're planning that for our May meetings, probably splitting that between athletic at one meeting and non-athletic at the other because we've had a lot of successes as they're in our co-curricular activities. And so that's why we're going to do an individual recognition, but he'll just be part of all of that stuff in May. So that's what we can look at, May is typically our month of celebrations in the school district anyway, so it'll go along with all of that, so.
So it's a male? He said he.
Or maybe. I did.
I heard it.
Okay.
Narrows it down.
All right, thank you. So on to A, consent agenda. Item A is approval of April vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of March 26th and April 16th 2018 school board minutes. C is approval of personnel recommendations. D, acceptance of Kohl's Field Trip Grants. And E, approval of depositories of district funds. Would anyone like to remove an item?
E.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, took a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Quinn, go ahead with E, the approval of depositories of district funds.
Can you explain what that is, Mike?
Every year around reorganization and according now to board policy, we really should approve which banks that we are depositing funds with. It should be a yearly thing and Neola placed that in there. So this is essentially listing off the banks that we currently deposit with. The addition on there is American Deposit Management in which we would be utilizing their services once we bring in the referendum funds to get some layered investments with them. So they are the addition to the list right now.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions? Then a motion to approve letter E.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Onto action items. 9A is semi-annual policy updates from Neola. Do I have a first?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nothing, nothing's changed since the last time we had a rec.
Correct.
And thank you again for getting the follow-up on that.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. B is job descriptions, do I have a first?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Onto 10, reports. 10A is a referendum update with Bray and then the financial update too.
Good evening, everybody. Congratulations again. Exciting evening to not only celebrate success, but talk about next steps in the process. So there's two key components this evening we wanted to spend some time on. The first is discussing construction delivery models or options that you as a school district have, so. So school districts are unique in that they are one of, I think the only, not an attorney, just an architect that does this, but I believe they're the only public sector entity in Wisconsin that doesn't have some relatively rigid stipulations around how they administer construction contracts. So you, in general, have every option, I would say, open to you as to how you would like to administer your contracts. So what I provided is a very high-level summary. There's a ton of nuance in, in construction delivery models. What this looks at is the solid lines are lines of contractual responsibility. The dashed lines are, are just lines of communication. So I'll give you a brief overview of what they look like. The upper left-hand corner, design, bid, build, is a pretty traditional delivery model. This is how many municipalities, towns, cities, counties, et cetera, deliver the vast majority of their projects. Many school districts still use it, it's kind of a tried and true model. We draw up all the plans and specifications, send it out to the bid market, bids are received and whoever the lowest responsible bidder is, is awarded the contract. That general contractor would be holding all of the subcontracts. So almost every contractor or construction manager, doesn't matter which term you use for that entity, they don't perform a lot of trades. They aren't electricians, they don't do, many of them, they don't supply bleachers in a gym, for example. So they're going to have subcontracts that they will be holding and taking on the risk for those subcontracts for all of the work it takes to complete the project per the plans and specifications. So that's the design, bid, build, pretty traditional. You as a school district still hold two contracts, pretty straightforward. There's two kinds of construction management. So the upper right-hand corner is sometimes referred to as negotiated general contractor. Sometimes it's called construction management at risk. You can see it looks very similar and it's almost identical to the contractual structure of the design, bid, build. The real difference is how you select that entity. As I described before, design, bid, build in the upper left. Plans are drawn, specifications are prepared, envelopes are open, lowest responsible bidder is how you would select that partner. Upper right-hand corner, you as a district will select the partner. You will select who the construction manager is. You will negotiate with them, what it's going to cost for them to do their work. We're just negotiating the services they provide. So the project management, the cost estimating, the onsite supervision, the cost of what are called general conditions. So the job trailer that sits outside, the cost of the superintendent's truck to travel to and from the job site or job sites. Those are all costs that general contractors or construction managers bear and we would be negotiating, the district would be negotiating those costs. So you're not selecting that partner based on a bid. And I just want to be upfront, it's not a bid. You're selecting a professional service provider, a partner for you and they play the role of construction manager. And then they would bid all of the work just as in the first option. You just would have somebody as you're at the table with you and they would be administering that process on your behalf. So contractually, it looks very similar. Really the difference is how you select that partner and potentially when that partner is engaged. The two options, the option in the lower left-hand corner, a construction management agency. You can see there's a lot of, what ends up happening is the construction manager does not have a contractual responsibility or obligation to any of the subcontractors. So you as the district would be holding all of those subcontracts. Could be as few as four or as many as 30, let's say. Depends really on the project and things like that. They're, they're still responsible for managing the process, but they, they really don't have contractual obligation to them. So you'll have more contracts to manage. This agency delivery model is relatively common in, I would say, and I'm going to use this term, I don't mean it that you're not, but very sophisticated organizations that build all the time. The state of Wisconsin has an office building full of architects, engineers, construction people. They use this delivery model because they're good at managing contracts and they employ people that do it every day. Most school districts aren't. You're in the job of educating students and you don't have, you've got great expertise, but not to the point where you could give up the amount of time it takes to manage a project like that. So it's an option, but it's not one that's heavily used in Wisconsin. And then the final option is design, build. This is where you would have one contract with a construction manager or general contractor who would subsequently hold the architect's contract and all of the subcontracts. It's a model, again, that's used. I think we've talked a little previously, it's not, for us, it's a little bit of the fox in the hen house. You've got, we as the architect are relying on the contractor to pay us and so while we will still be the professional and provide the service we're supposed to, it does put us a little bit, sometimes, in a position where we can't come directly to you as the owner. In the same way, the construction manager, I think, feels a little more obligation not to potentially be as upfront. So I think in general, I'll say 99% of the projects delivered in the state of Wisconsin are one of the top two models. The next two pages, all this really is, is kind of the steps we would suggest or at least the starting point for the steps you would consider taking once you elect to follow one of the two paths. As I said before, there's a ton of nuance that goes into all of this. When you select your partner is sometimes a question. There's, if it's design, bid, build, you wouldn't need, you're not going to select that partner until closer to the end of the project. Plans are drawn, you bid the project. The other piece with that to consider, if you want to go that route, is there's two ways to do it. You can, I'll say, send the plans to the world, basically. We'll put the drawings out and you could have people bidding on it from all over the Midwest. It doesn't happen, people are pretty local generally, but you could be getting bids from all over the place. Or you could use a model where you request qualifications from these entities that are interested in bidding on the project and then you would do what's called pre-qualifying. So the district would say, these three or four or five or six general contractors have met our qualifications. They have the personnel, they worked in schools before, whatever the set of criteria that we would decide to use to pre-qualify. You would pre-qualify those vendors and those would be the only entities that would be allowed to bid on the general construction contract. And again, whoever in the end is the low bidder, lowest responsible bidder, when the envelopes are open, would become your contractor. Construction management is a model where we would go through a similar process, where we would still send out a request for qualifications on behalf of the school district. You might get, in this geography, I would think you'd get between six and 10 responses of construction managers that are interested in being your partner. We would, as a group, shortlist that to a manageable number, typically three, sometimes four, sometimes two, but I wouldn't recommend much more than that. So somewhere around three. We would then go to those three, bring them in for a formal interview. You're going to meet them, you're going to meet their project managers, their superintendents, the people you're going to be working with. And we would ask them to give us fee proposals at that time for their services. It would not be a bid on all of the work because the drawings are not complete and the specifications aren't. So that's how you're hiring and that's sometimes what's called negotiated general contractor. You're really negotiating the terms, the financial terms of that agreement with the construction manager. So again, there's, as I said, there's a lot of nuance to these delivery models, so please feel free to ask questions. And the other thing I would say is there's no right or wrong. Every school district does this a little bit differently, however you're most comfortable. Slinger School District bid three projects in their big referendum and did a CM for the final one. Muskego Norway did CM for the majority and just bid their pool. Nothing right or wrong, it was what was right for them and I would encourage you to do what is in the school district's best interest as we make this decision. Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not looking for action tonight, is that correct? We were looking to kind of educate you on your options? And then at a later date, we'll get some direction on which way you want to head.
And that allows for, as you continue to have more questions about it, that process, whatever you might have, we can bring that forward with that. Obviously, we, we're not going to go out to bid by May 1st or anything like that so that we do have a little bit of time and want to make sure that the process is one that everybody thoroughly understands. We started out this whole thing by looking at process and even in terms of selecting and now it's time to revisit it as we look at the other steps of that. So not that we have tons and tons of time, but we have enough time that we can make sure that we're all comfortable with what that looks like. So as people from the community, residents, ask us, what's the next step in it? We all can sort of explain it, at least at layman's terms, what it looks like.
So what's a reasonable expectation for the delivery method to be chosen? June?
What do you think, Matt, in terms of moving forward with your tentative?
I don't think there's a huge rush, quite frankly. We're going to be proceeding as a design team in the same manner, whether there's a construction manager or not a construction manager. One, construction managers will tell you that they can add the most value by being involved early because they can provide all kinds of detail and budget, et cetera, et cetera. The cynic in me says they're just going to say that because they want to get involved earlier. There's some value there. The other way to look at it, the benefit of waiting a little while longer, and this is actually quite frankly what Slinger did and we've done this a handful of times, is they didn't select a construction manager until we were, let's say, 60% done with construction documents. Much deeper along, but still early enough that they can become the partner, help with the scheduling, do some budgeting. And what we asked in those cases, where we've used that kind of, I'll say, a little later selection of that partner, is we send them the drawings and specifications at the state they're at and ask them to come to their interview with a preliminary look at budget and schedule and ask them what they think. I'll tell you, construction managers don't like it, it's a fair amount of work to put into a project. They're always afraid that they need to bring the lowest bid or budget to the interview. I've never seen a board do that. They've always selected somebody who was the most transparent and the most honest in their opinion with the correct budget, not the lowest budget, because having the lowest budget's irrelevant, right? It's got to be right. If it's not right, it doesn't do you any good. And so the schedule question, I think, kind of goes along with delivery. If you go design, bid, build, we just wait. We'll pre-qualify as we're getting closer to completing the drawings so that the people, that the construction firms that are going to be our partner in this will know their workload and will know their availability and who they're going to put on the project. If we go construction management, then we will talk to you about kind of going, I'll say, immediately. Immediate means right after you make your decision on delivery model. Or we can decide whether we want to wait a little while and use kind of the hybrid I just described of more of a completed set of drawings that we send to them.
So give me a little more information on the difference between one and two and the contractor and the CM.
So contractually, they look identical. So you're going to still hold two contracts, one with the architect, us, one with the construction manager or general contractor, doesn't matter. The real difference is how you select that partner. So design, bid, build, the first option upper left, you'd be selecting that contractor by us completing all the drawings, having them submit a bid, a competitive bid, open the envelopes, review the numbers and whoever's the lowest response, I say responsible, but lowest bidder.
And so, someone comes in twenty percent lower, ten percent lower, you say, what, what, is there a magic number?
So, we just had this happen, we used this model over in Mount Horeb on a large project. Their high school came in way under budget, great bids, really good day. The lowest bidder, they had pre-qualified, so they had four vendors that submitted bids to them. One was a million dollars lower than the other three. The other three were pretty tight in the group. So, what we do is we open the bids privately, so they don't know where they stand. And then we went back, and we had all of our engineers review with their subcontractors to be comfortable that they had the scope covered.
And they missed anything?
Yep, so, there always is the risk that they missed it, but quite frankly, the, the same risk applies in the construction management model with subs bidding. It's, it's an art, it's not a science. There's a lot that goes into it. So, that's how we would handle that. And then the construction management piece, I'm going to say this just to make the point, I don't take it as a negative. You as the district basically select the winner, versus opening the envelope, selecting the winner. You are going to pick the partner for you, your construction manager, through qualifications, interview, and fee proposals. It's not necessarily the lowest fee proposal, or the lowest set of general conditions who you're going to select. You're going to select the partner that you're most comfortable with, and they're going to bid out every trade. I should clarify that. You will get to decide whether they should bid out every trade or not. Many of the construction managers in Wisconsin self-perform work, so they actually have masons and concrete workers and carpenters and steel erectors, some of them have that on staff. And so, you'll have to be upfront, we'll want to be upfront with them. Are they going to be allowed to bid on those trades that they self-perform or not? That'll affect some of them and their desire to pursue it or not. And if you are going to let them bid, many districts now are saying, your, your bids for any area that you want to self-perform, come to the school district. So, Joe's erecting, and Jane's erecting, and Acme Construction Management, if they all do steel erection, all of their bids come to you, so that Joe and Jane know they're getting a fair shake when you open your construction manager's bid for steel erection, for example.
So, I, I believe, and Stephanie can help me out here, that is, that method, the second method, is what we did in the first go-around here, prior. We, the previous buildings in Matt, had metrics and narrowed it down to two, and we interviewed those two, the GCs, and, and then we didn't win, so, it's not right there.
Sure.
But, I think that's a method that we were, the football field, I don't know how that was bid, but I know that the GC did have his own, have their own workers performing some of the trades, not all of them, but some of the trades. What is the school board's part in all this?
So, I'll kind of break it into a couple, there's a couple different responses for that. So, I'll start with what I think your role is for this specific discussion on construction delivery, and I, I don't know the nuances of your board policies and everything. I'm guessing your role is to select a preferred delivery model, and turn it back to your admin team to, to implement, and if that means some of you participating in an interview or not, I, I don't know how you structure that. But, that's my guess as to what your role will be in this piece. Your role, if I kind of think to the design process, which we softly kicked off the other day and are going to start rolling out in more detail, most school boards are engaged and informed, but not active day-to-day. So, every board meeting has a standing agenda item, where the admin team is updating the, the board on what's happening with the progress of the project, what happened over the last two weeks, what meetings are you having, any updates for us, anything good, anything negative happen, just keeping you in the loop, keeping you informed. And then, we as, go ahead.
So, engaged, informed, but not active?
But not active. And by active, I mean day-to-day. You, board members aren't attending a staff meeting with the middle school science department, where we're going to be laying out new science labs. We would often bring to you at key intervals in the project, here's our ninety percent floor plan that staff is really excited about, and we feel it's on budget, and do you have any questions, kind of keeping you up to speed, but not active day-to-day in the decision-making.
Can I make a suggestion that, Kathy, that you write that down, and then when we have the full board here, we all discuss that, and we all commit to whatever it may be? Is that a reasonable idea?
I think that's an excellent idea.
And I don't want that to, to make it sound like you aren't involved. I mean, you've, you're making the key decisions, and you're funding the project, and you took the action to make this happen. But, there's up, ten thousand decisions that happen on every project, and a lot of that interaction is just, quite frankly, educators sitting around tables making decisions. The decision really is to bring it forward to you as the board, and, and kind of get your consensus around, yes, that's a good direction or not. I mean, I can think in this case, HCE is probably the one that's going to have the most discussion around it. I don't know that there's a great deal of discussion needed around some new middle school science labs. Again, that doesn't mean we're not going to include you in it, but there's not a great deal to approve or agree on. I think we always will bring forward floor plans as they're being developed, when we get initial exterior concepts, site plans, interior finishes. So, I'd kind of say key intervals, but I would always say a standing agenda item with just a verbal report and update from your leadership team on every board agenda is really important.
So, are both of these two models where we heard about the healthy friction between you, our architect, and either contractor, are both of those?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. I'm good for now.
Good questions, thank you.
I guess, so we'll have it as a standing agenda item. How if we wanted you to come back to talk, obviously, we're missing two board members today, but especially as we get closer to making this decision, is it just based on your calendar?
Yeah, Mondays are, yeah, a little heads-up would be, Mondays are usually not great for me, just because there's a lot of board meetings. But, yeah, I would be absolutely happy to, to come back and, and have these discussions with any board member.
And if people have questions in between, is it something where we can put them together? Obviously, send them through Mike or Lisa, and have them send it to you and get it back in a memo form to save you a trip?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, and like I said, there is just a ton of nuance, and you're, if you asked fifty people to describe these delivery models, you're probably going to get forty-five different responses, because there's just, everybody's got a bit of an advocacy for one over the other. And so, I'm sure after this video goes live, you'll get calls from others saying, he didn't explain that exactly. Fair enough. It's my perspective, after twenty years of working with schools, that I just shared with you. But, if you have additional questions or want some clarifications, we're absolutely happy to. It's an important decision. It really is. It's, it's the partner that you're going to potentially build, you know, thirteen, fourteen million dollars worth of construction worth in your community. So, it's important, and I'm glad you're taking it seriously.
So, who is going to be your liaison with us?
So, I remain involved, not at every meeting, but Mike Hacker, who you've met at a number of meetings, and then Ryan Sands as well. So, both of them have been involved at a certain level. And then we build the team out with additional experts, technical experts that know how to put buildings together, interior designers who do that for a living, code experts who understand the new building code, which comes into play on May 1st. So, the main faces won't change for you, in terms of myself, Mike, and Ryan. There'll be just other people at the table with us who have far greater expertise in certain areas than we do.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for all the work you did with us. I mean, we were, the process went a lot smoother, a lot better, it was more thoughtful, more inclusive. You were honest, and had time to say, I really shouldn't do that, let's do it. You were patient with all the questions. I know that it's hard, because you're dealing with a lot of different districts, and then you're getting bombarded on a Monday night, but thank you. I mean, without your partnership, we wouldn't have any work today, so.
I appreciate that, thank you. It's been a pleasure, and, and this is really the fun part now, in designing spaces that affect teaching and learning for decades to come. That's the part we don't want to lose sight of as we make all of these decisions, so.
Any other questions?
I have one other little piece for you, and I'm not going to belabor this, this is one for, for future discussions as well.
Okay.
And this is just part of keeping you in the loop? So, what we've been working on is a preliminary schedule. So, preliminary is important here. We wanted to give you some sense of when we, at this point, with limited development and, and limited engagement with staff, when projects were going to happen. I'll kind of point out, we were very intentional trying to line up all of the projects to bid at the same time, with a couple little exceptions, which I'll point out. And the reason for that was, we didn't want to put the district in a position to, say, go on Project A two months from now, and then six months from now, come back and say, gosh, you know, if I would have known that the whole pro, if we needed to save twenty thousand dollars, I wouldn't have done Project A, which I approved six months ago. So, the hope here, by lining up this bidding with a couple little exceptions, is that you're going to have the full financial picture when you approve these projects to proceed. The other part that's difficult, and it always is with April referendums, it's not unique to Whittonell, is it's, it feels like you should do something in the first summer, but there's really not any time to design, engineer, acquire any major piece of equipment these days, takes months to, to acquire. And so, you really miss that first summer window. And when we're dealing with a, a lot of this in renovations, and intense renovations of occupied spaces, we miss a little bit of the first summer. That's just part of an April referendum. I think the positive is, it really gives you a comfortable design schedule to make really good decisions. So, this is a very comfortable schedule. A couple quick things to point out. You can see we're focusing the Edgerton work for the summer of 2019. Again, bathrooms, occupied spaces, not a great, if, for some reason, they want us to do it during school, which I don't think they will, it could be done sooner, but I don't think there's a great deal of need to do that. HCE is the toughest one. We'll bring back, as we develop the plans further, a detailed phasing plan, what happens first, second, third, when to site. In general, we're thinking, the summer of nineteen is when we will do site development and mass demolition. So, take the eastern end of the school down, and try when kids come back to school for the nineteen-twenty school year, have the new site circulation patterns in place. Caveat, we still have to develop that plan a little further, and, and there may be some things that change, but that's our general thought. Middle school, both the middle school and high school tech ed are going to require some partnership with the schools, and displacing a little bit of program. And Lisa's done a great job kind of working preliminarily, I think, on kind of when the potential time to lose those labs or spaces would be best. Is that fair? And, and this kind of represents, especially specifically, the high school's thought of losing it mid-year instead of losing it into the next year. Because the other option would have been to start it in June and push it into the nineteen-twenty school year, and at this point at least, the, the assumption is we're going to start sooner. The other thing we did specifically here was try to overlap a lot of the construction, instead of stringing it way out. If we would have started some sooner and pushed some later, there's all the costs of construction, and so, staffing, project management, superintendent. Our hope is that by overlapping a lot of this, some of the smaller projects will take advantage of Hales Corners, and having all of that staff committed already to that project, and I think we just get a better economy of scale of overlapping all of these jobs. The only piece that we're looking, and we're going to work with Todd and his team on getting, going right away on, are the high school boiler and the air conditioning work. We, we believe it's work that can happen during school, so we're going to go ahead and design it and engineer it quickly, try to get that bid late in the summer, and that work can just simply happen during next school year. We're not going to take the old boilers down until the new ones are in, and so, you'll be into the winter months with a new boiler, and come next graduation, you'll have air conditioning in the gym. So, we thought that was one that just made sense. It can be done, why not tackle it?
We won't have new air conditioning by in two weeks?
(laughter) Todd just said it was going to take like ten days.
Are they telling they're working right now?
What's that?
They'd be working right now if it was going to be ready.
He cloned himself.
I think it's going to snow on graduation day, so, you'll be all right. So, that's a piece to move forward, and then, and this is not a surprise to anybody, the pool piece. We talked about when to do it, what's the right time, and Lisa, please correct me if I'm wrong. We believe March-April is kind of the, not that there's ever a downtime for a pool, but it's the least utilized time for a pool, and so, we're going to target that timeframe. The asterisk is critical on that one. Until we pull the old liner out, we don't know exactly what we're dealing with. So, a couple months is sufficient to pull, drain the pool, pull the liner, put a new liner in. If, if we uncover something as a group, once that liner's out, we're going to be back here with you, just rallying on what to do next, and how long to take, and what is the financial consequence of it. So, again, I don't think that should be a surprise to anybody. We've known that all along, and that is a one caveat, is the pool is, I think, until we get into it, we just don't know exactly what we're dealing with.
Yeah, and on that part, Dave has already started, as he's making contracts for facilities for next year, has pretty much not guaranteed after that for folks, and so, we're just trying to give them that heads up, and even into that following fall. So, we've already, because we do start doing our contracts for facilities beyond that. So, swim season is done there, but he's already given heads up to Park and Rec, and Swim Club, and all of those types of pieces. So, we're, we're trying to communicate that the best that we can, and even say, here's the best-case scenario, here's the worst-case scenario, so.
So, any questions on that? And again, it's key, it's preliminary. These will evolve a little bit as we get further into the design. But, we wanted to give you some sense, as community members asked, of what our just initial thoughts for schedule are.
(inaudible)
Then the final little piece, and I know you guys talked a little bit, was continuing communication. We do offer all of our clients ongoing communication support, so if you want to do a monthly written update during the design process, Ally from our office and Logan can easily get together and do that. They're pretty boring, the first couple of them. We met, we hired a surveyor, we did soil borings. But, I think the key is to not go silent after the community supports your project. Let's continue to communicate, even if it's nothing exciting. It gets more exciting as plans are developed and renderings come to light. It's something each of you have. You can send to everybody in your email list, make it available on the website, send to all parents and staff. If you're interested in that, let's, we can just connect Logan and Ally, and they'll, they'll, she'll be the liaison to our architectural team to help you prepare that.
Yeah, they've really worked on building, and we call it the Connect, but it's a mass email that goes out, and people are used to going to that, so we include this with that. The Citizens Advisory Committee who's involved, we can keep them in the loop as well, and then having it on the website, like you said, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, we're, it's, it's critically important that we continue communicating, so we're happy to help in any way we can there.
Good.
Any questions on the schedule? Again, more to come, but hopefully, it's just a good first start, and gives you something to respond to questions with.
Any other questions on board?
All right, thank you. Thank you for continued support.
Okay, now we'll go to the financial update with Mike. So, alongside of all this is, of course, actually getting the dollars in which to implement what, what we, what we just passed. And so, as, as we're working pretty closely right now with Robert W. Baird and the advisor there, Lisa Voison. And obviously, with, with any financing, we have some, some goals we want to keep in mind. Of course, we want to minimize total interest costs. We brought forth a referendum mill rate increase of fifty-three cents to the community, so we're structuring debt around that, around that number. We want to try to have some repayment flexibility, whether that means having some sort of cliff built into the twenty-year structure, in which at some point, a, a larger part of that debt falls off the table, and gives the district flexibility to, to do something with that debt falling off or not. We're certainly looking to mitigate interest rate risk. Obviously, we're starting to enter into an environment in which we are seeing interest rates rise, and so, we're going to be moving relatively quickly here to, to lock in rates at, at a flexible time period. We just got a couple days ago, what Bray kind of outlined as what they see as the spend schedule. In other words, as you look at these projects, when are those dollars going to be spent, up to that sixteen-point-one million, over what timeframe? And so, in those instances, we know if we have that, that spend schedule, we can maximize investments, and time things out appropriately, so that those dollars aren't just sitting in a point oh-oh-oh-one percent savings account, that we can actually do some different things based on when the cash is needed. And so, those are really kind of the, the goals that we are, are looking at, when we begin to just look at how we want to structure this thing. So, from a, from a board standpoint, you've got a couple of, of things that we're going to be doing at May. First of all, we're asking Robert W. Baird to be the underwriter for our, for our bonds. In other words, they are going to have the authority working with us to be able to determine exactly when we want to lock in rates, okay? So, we, we want to have the flexibility to just say, on a particular day, this is it, let's go. And so, on May, on, on the fourteenth, we'll kind of talk about what, what that looks like in a little more detail. But, on the twenty-first, we'll be acting on a proposal in which we give Robert W. Baird the, as the underwriter. We have some informal, some formalities to go through as far as what that means. But, really, it gives us the flexibility with Baird to then lock in at any particular moment on any particular day. And we would be just watching the markets with them, with their, really their expertise to be able to do that. And so, that will be- do that. And so, that will be on the board action for May 21st. What we're looking at is borrowing in two phases. You can, for a lower interest rate, districts are able to borrow really up to $10 million in any particular calendar year of what we call bank-qualified loans, versus non-bank-qualified. Non-bank-qualified just comes with a higher interest rate. So, part of what goes into that is how much you also borrow in short-term cash flow as well. So, in 2018, I know you, we'll bring this up again in the fall, but in 2018, we're gonna have to borrow for short-term cash flow as non-bank-qualified, because we want the full $10 million for the referendum project to be bank-qualified, if that makes sense. So, when we come back, you may see some different paperwork with cash flow to borrow this upcoming, this upcoming fall. So, we'll do the $10 million in 2018, and then another 6.1 in early parts of 2019, as we get as much of that, of that borrowing as bank-qualified as possible. If we do all 16.1 at once, again, that would expose 6.1 million to bank, non-bank-qualified, and we don't wanna have that. Breaking it up into two also gives us a little more flexibility in the repayment schedule, which is part of what our, our goals are in this, in this process. Questions so far?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, breathe for a minute.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. You said, in two years. So, are you talking calendar year, fiscal year?
Calendar year.
So, in theory, we could borrow December, and then we could borrow in January?
We want, we could, in theory, we wouldn't wanna do that, but in theory, we could.
On calendar year?
Correct. Okay, yep. Yeah, no, it's not anything else.
And why wouldn't we want to split those, is there a $10 million split, so that we could actually do the short-term?
In, in either year, we borrow enough where you're gonna be spilling over into bank-qualified, and two, I would say, predominantly, we wanna take advantage of the interest rates now on the most amount of money, instead of waiting into 2019, knowing the kind of environment that we're in.
And what kind of higher interest rate is it not qualified?
Non-qualified, you're probably looking at as much as 35 basis points, which over the course of 20 years would be about $665,000 of additional interest.
Well, I agree.
Good enough reason not to do it.
Good enough reason not to do it. Second, there are, as we've talked about throughout the referendum process, and as I've talked about at, at different meetings that we've had, we do have quite a bit of flexibility in this first year, as far as what we do from a borrowing standpoint. And so, what I've, what, what we've had Baird do is, is really break out two different repayment schedules, and this is something that I really want the board to think about over the course, before we get to kind of May, or before May 14th, when we have a discussion on this again, is, we can do, like I said, a couple of different things. We can have the, the traditional repayment schedule over the course of 20 years, which will be at a mill rate impact of that 50, 53 cents, where we time it out each and every year, 53 cents, and, and, and we go. This upcoming year, as, if you can recall, we're gonna have a mill rate drop that is much greater than 53 cents. So, when the referendum dollars pop onto our, our, our revenue limit formula, we're still gonna have a mill rate that is lower than what it is this past year, right? So, we were at 1009 in 1718, because of a number of factors, that mill rate is gonna drop as much as a dollar, a dollar thirty.
Per thousand.
When we, well, when we add, when we back, when we put the per thousand, correct, as we bring that referendum back on, right, it'll increase it again, but it's not gonna bring it up to that 1009. So, we have some options in which, again, we can continue to just pay it out at the, at this 51 cents, timed out in year one, we could levy something additional to get us up to that 1009, and, and have those dollars there to mitigate mill rate impacts in future years. We could also lay out a schedule that says, we'll take on more in the first year, actually, more in the first 10 years, and have a, excuse me, a, a drop-off, a cliff in year 10. So, we might say, alright, traditionally, we could take the 1.3 million dollars, 1.1.3, 1.3, 1.3, all the way through, until we pay it off at 51 cents. We could engage in a schedule that says, no, let's do 1.5, 1.6 each of these years, have a drop-off in year 10. What I mean by a drop-off is, that mill rate impact might go from a dollar to 40 cents, a dollar per 1,000 to 40 cents per 1,000 after year 10, and it affords the district then some flexibility to say, is now a time, because we have debt falling off, is now a time to look at Phase Two, or do we just keep going with a normal payment schedule? You could at least put the decision back into the taxpayers' hands at that point, or, and, and, and you could have some flexibility with that mill rate to show very minimal impact in the mill rate at year 10. You can still do that in the traditional sense of what I'm saying, of a 1.1, like I said, in years in which the mill rate is gonna significantly drop like it's going to in 1819, we could say, yes, we know that that repayment is 1.3 million, yes, we know that the mill rate's gonna drop significantly lower than 1009, we can levy up to that 1009, show the taxpayers, look at, we wanna keep a, an even mill rate, a stable mill rate, but we would have dollars in our debt fund that we could use at any point throughout the, the schedule to say, this is a year in which the mill rate is gonna increase quite a bit, let's levy less for the referendum, and use some of that balance that we got in year one to smooth out tax payments in future years. And that, so, that's, that, that's really about, really comes up to three different ways in which to kind of handle this. I guess, from my standpoint, of what I would be looking for from the board, is to say, is that 10-year, is that, is that 10-year drop-off, is that 10-year piece important to us? And if it is, then we wanna be clear in our communication to the public that, here's what we put forth, we said it was gonna be 53 cents, and it is, okay, it is 53 cents. However, in year one, if we are going to ask for more based on the mill rate only being 1009, their property tax bill will show more than the 53 cents, right? Even though the mill rate won't go above the 1009, their property tax bill will show more. So, we have to be very clear on the strategy that we're employing, and the communication that takes place, and really, that's, can be nothing else than really showing, well, look at the graph, the overall mill rate is still at 1009, here's why we're doing what we're doing, because we wanna have this flexibility moving forward, to keep a stable mill rate all the way through this borrow as much as we can. It's, it's a real clear communication about what people are gonna see, and, and I'm bringing it up, 'cause I need the board to be on board with that as well, or whatever strategy we employ. So, over the course of the next three weeks, maybe just think about that, as maybe we discuss it again on the 14th, what sort of flexibility do we want in year 10, if we know that we've had this list, is this something that we want to employ or not?
So, how can we look in the future and, and say that it's still gonna be 1009 in the 10, in the 10th year?
So, the, the best thing that we can do is levy up to 1009 this fall, because that will bank extra dollars into Fund 39.
Which is?
Which is our debt fund. So, you'll see a new fund this year, it's very exciting. You'll see a new fund this year.
It's debt.
Yeah, it's, but it's, it's. But it's a new, it's a new number, it's a new number. Fund 39.
For number geeks.
New number. So, what we would do is, we would in essence be running, after this initial levy, this initial 1819, you would essentially have a fund balance in Fund 39. And so, in the next year, let's just pretend that the mill rate would go up to 1020, we could say, we are not gonna levy as much from the public in the second year, we're gonna draw off of that fund balance, and bring that levy back down to 1009. That would be the, the, the way to structure that differently, to be able to kind of, you could at least show that you're trying to do what you can to mitigate as much as possible. Remember, what we've put forth is that this is a cost of 53 cents, that, that doesn't go away. We had a 1009 mill rate this year, okay? So, that, that doesn't go away.
So, is 1009, is that taxing to the max?
Yes.
And that Fund 39 is specifically used for that function?
Correct, to pay debt.
And what about the non-tertiary, and are we gonna get less funds?
We are.
Three years?
We are.
General, general aid funds, what?
Yeah, so we are, but Baird and its calculations have already included that in, into the 53 cent mill rate, okay? So, if we make larger payments, that'll change, that'll, the state aid will fluctuate based on those larger payments. So, we have to kind of see a, a little bit about how our student population is continuing to grow, what's happening with property values, those sorts of things. And again, we can only project out probably in safety, two to three years. So, we are conscious of that, but the 53 cents that we put forth does include the loss of state aid, based on these extra debt payments that are included as expenditures to the district.
I'm not falling asleep, I'm excited.
Another thing, you know, so, in the meetings with Baird, they brought back up, especially if you go off the bond ratings, the need for an actuarial study, I know we've talked about it before. So, we're at the point now, we said before that, well, if it passed, we're probably gonna have to do it, right? Well, Lisa Voison was less than pleased that we didn't have one done. But Mike's already started the process of getting them going. Not sure how soon it'll be done, or how that'll impact the initial bond offer, but.
I think it'll be at least important to show in the next couple of weeks, so we're expecting, let me give you some timelines here, and then I'll, I'll stop after that. We're gonna do some board action on the 21st, which will in essence allow Baird to be the underwriter at that point. We can borrow nearly at any time, we're thinking early to mid-June, hopefully, early June. We'll have a bond rating call, as Jonathan was alluding to, with either Moody's or S&amp;P, based on what Lisa Voison knows about the factors of Whitnall, and who she finds is favorable or not. We're really looking for that double A rating, which would be, which would be great. Again, we have to explain some things, and, and the, the actuarial study, if we can show that we're at least in the midst of that, it'll probably be, be helpful to us. But, we're targeting a mid-June to late-June, as far as actually receiving the dollars. Late-June would be probably the early, probably is what we would hope for in this whole process. And as soon as that, what that means is getting those dollars into the bank, and starting to invest them appropriately, to, to, again, maximize interest, and maximizing interest on $10 million can make, can, can do some things for us, as far as freeing up some additional dollars for, for decisions that we need to make. I don't know if it'll.
So, what type of investments are we talking?
Probably strictly talking laddering CDs. That's probably what we're strictly talking about.
Non-risk?
Correct. I'm not looking to get into Apple or anything like that, and, and roll them to dice. You can't take the money to Vegas, Quinn, it's just gonna be in laddered CDs.
Give it to her.
And so, that's where, that's where ABM is gonna come in, as far as who we approve tonight as a depository. They will bid out those CDs for us, and get the best, get the best rates that, that we can get, and probably ladder anywhere from three to, to 12 months.
Any other questions for the financial update portion?
Advisory committee members, can they speak? You have any questions?
So, just to confirm, so on May 14, is a workshop meeting in which we will continue this financial discussion prior to the May 21st?
Yep.
Okay.
And if Lisa Voison can be here at that time, I'll certainly bring her along as well, if there's any more detailed things that just go beyond what my brain can comprehend. But, I think we're in a really good, good setup here, and that we're excited about.
And to your point, Quinn, during that meeting, anyone that wants to come from the community, as we're going item by item, you can ask questions too. So, that's a meeting to be at, we'll have the discussion, you can ask questions as you go along. Correct, correct. Eric, thank you, Mike. So, B is the superintendent report and monthly update of district goals.
I'm gonna keep this short, since some of my items were already covered, so I'm good with that. So, first item has to do with our student achievement academic excellence, and so I would say, the updates that we've done in April with that is, moving forward, so this is our curriculum information that we've been using, and we talked about, Lynn last month had done the, what we referred to as a stopgap, because we did not have all of our curriculum located in one place. So, now, as we look at it, and I think we're starting to have conversations with teachers, and all of them realizing it, they realize like, ugh, I think it's got some work. And so, we've adopted a framework for which to look at it, and I think Lynn mentioned it last week, this rigor and relevance relationships framework, to be able to look at that. So, our teachers are starting to, we're starting to just dip our toes in at the middle school, by having them, on our weekly, we have weekly team meetings Tuesdays and Thursdays, to look at, example, a learning target in a classroom, and I think they're really starting to come to the realization that some of the rigor on some of the learning targets is not as deep as it could be. I'll give you a really quick example, 'cause I can't pass up the opportunity to be teaching and learning ever, but, for example, the verb understand, as compared to, you know, understand, fill in the blank, whatever it is you're talking about, as compared to the verb analyze, right? There's a lot more that goes around with the verb analyze than there is something like just describe something. So, as we start to look at the rigor of what we're expecting our students to do, we have to make sure that it's at the exact same level of rigor that we want, that we're assessing them at that level, and that it represents that. Because if we're expecting them to demonstrate something at a higher level, then how we're assessing them needs to make sure that they can demonstrate it. So, that's our next journey in looking at our curriculum, to make sure that the rigor aligns with what we want them to do in, in parts of that. So, that's our next journey, along with getting, our curriculum is there, but now I think it's sort of come to the place where we realize that it's got some work to do. Our next one has to do with our, our behavioral data and academic data. What we've done here is, and specifically last week and this week, and Lynn will be up here shortly, redefine, that redefining ready dashboard, AP data is probably our last data. In the process of getting ready for last week for the board meeting and this week, it's really uncovered a lot of stuff for us to go back and look at, and Lynn will share tonight some of what that looks like, so I won't speak too much on there. Our college career readiness, I shared with you last, last month, that we're having the Building Trades Summer Institute, Scott Burning is working on getting students enrolled in that to participate that. And then, this week, both Charlie and I have been talking with one of our science teachers at the high school, to start to develop the career pathway in the, the medical pieces of that, and so there's some, part of the Fast Forward Grants from M A T C that they're doing, are, they're putting forward a grant to allow them to train high school teachers, because there is a shortage in the health sciences of instructors. So, not, not only are there shortages of healthcare workers, there's a shortage of instructors to be able to do that. So, they wanna sort of dual-certify more high school teachers to be able to do that, and so they're applying for a Fast Forward Grant, and hopefully hear from that quickly. So, we do have one of our high school science teachers who's interested in getting certified and start moving along that pathway, so we can start to develop the coursework around that. For our students, I've shared before, the One Plus Three Program, we're really trying, doing a lot of different occupations, have students leave high school with having that one year at least out of the way, so that it only takes them three years in a post-secondary education to get a bachelor's degree. So, those are, those are some of the things to report since last month, when we've been doing that. The district communication piece, I think Kathy sort of highlighted that in the beginning of the meeting. as we look to communicate to our public, trying to look at that board website and give some more ways of communicating to the public. We did start over the last couple of months, probably both in the eWeekly and the Connect, putting that board brief link in there and the agenda. Today, we had a district leadership team meeting from all the buildings, and they said that, they appreciated that, because while anybody can go out to the website and get that, just having it right there to click on reminds them of what it is and gives them a quick synopsis of what happened without waiting till the minutes, because sometimes, you know, it takes a whole month for the minutes to get approved, and by that time, a lot of the news is old. Fifth goal, maybe I should say nothing, because the goal itself was to develop and implement communications plan for referendum process. So I'm not sure what that looks like post-referendum, but we did talk, so thank you cards are getting mailed out to residents right now, in terms of thank you for that piece of it, and it reminds them what they can do now to watch our process. Follow the website, Logan has started to transition it from leading up to the referendum to watch the construction timeline, we'll put some videos on there. People can still, that email group will continue to still be alive. We will be able to use, we have a drone that we've had for several years, I guess, that will be able to capture some of that as things get a little bit more exciting, to put out there in terms of that. We'll use the Whitnall Window, our quarterly newsletter, to continue to put that out there. And we just talked a little bit with Bray about how do we keep the public informed as we move forward with that. I'm not going to report too much on the financial planning and budget model, not because it's exciting, but a lot of it, I think Mike just gave a recap on some of that. Not that everything is around referendum, but a lot, a lot of the pieces of it. We can, we just put our summer school registration out through Infinite Campus, and we are getting ready, next Monday night, we're holding a meeting for incoming fifth graders to register online for their electives. We're really trying to promote what electives are available to our students, and really try to have them understand that they should be making much more intentional choices with electives, even in middle school, about what does that mean for, after that, rather than just, it doesn't matter what you take, because they should be a little bit more intentional. And so we'll be having them register online, so get our fifth grade parents set up for that, and we'll be doing that registration shortly, as we look at all of those systems. Because most of our elementary parents are looking on there, but probably not as frequently as they do as you start to get to be a high school parent. If you remember back to those days, you looked a lot less at the elementary level. So getting them engaged and understanding how they will have to do online registration, even for the electives that they're going to sign up for as sixth graders, so. And then the last two goals, we're going to continue on with what we've been doing, and I won't get into a lot of the personnel issues, but we are in busy season right now as things are being posted and all of those types of things. And we are, Karen was just at the State School Personnel Conference that was last Thursday, Friday. So a lot of districts are talking about, as we're seeing a lot of trends shifting from what education is known to be much more like other industries, what does that mean? How do we start to blend a legacy system of compensation to what is much more market-driven compensation? How do those two things operate in the same arena? And that's our biggest challenge right now, and we are not the only district about that. When you have two different models of those competing with each other, to try to say that's what the market is demanding right now, especially in high-demand licenses, and people who have had their salary based on something else that was not based on market supply and demand. So it's been an interesting shift, both for educators to understand what that means, and we've had lots of conversations, we're developing a few procedures because of it. People trying to just come in and understand values of different things. And for the first time, actually having to prioritize values based on license and need and market supply and demand, and that's very foreign to folks in an educational setting. So those have been some interesting conversations, because they don't really necessarily have the skills or haven't had those skills to negotiate those, or navigate how to even know what that means. So we spent a lot of time administratively talking about that, because we're getting questions, and how do we inform them? How do they understand how the industry as a whole operates now than from the way that it used to? Because that really just was not part of their world, they just came in and it was all decided for them. So I would say those are our biggest challenges right now in both Goals Eight and Nine, as we look at the whole talent management, human resources, and all of those types of things, and we continue to build out those processes, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. C is strategic planning and student achievement data with Lynn.
More good news? Something?
So this is, we can go to the next. So we're going to do a little part B on AP. Last week we talked about AP as a standstill in Whitnall, and, you know, what we are doing as far as having offering our courses and having students take exams or not, depending on their needs. So tonight, we're just going to take a quick look at sort of the world around us as it pertains to AP. So if you want to just click that link, Kathy. We historically have had kind of a base bunch of offerings in our AP courses. Let's give us a little timeline here, starting in twenty-eleven, how we've added progressively from twenty-eleven on. So from the bottom up is what we've continued to add as we get to twenty-seventeen. As we said last week, we've got a couple of things coming on board for twenty eighteen, nineteen, and one more course coming on for twenty nineteen, twenty. So we do have kind of a progression of things going. We will continue to look at what student needs are, what the demand is outside of Whitnall, and looking at secondary and career, and what those AP needs are for those students, and make those decisions accordingly. When we go on to the next screen, what we look at here is the number of course offerings for Whitnall as compared to some of the districts around us. So the small, small table there just gives the total and big numbers. So you can see, we are the least number of offerings as of this year. We don't have any data on other schools for next year yet, so this is all twenty seventeen, eighteen. We know that we're bringing down a couple of new things next year. So you can see that we're sitting at fourteen as compared to Greenfield's fifteen, Franklin's nineteen, and then Greendale and New Berlin are sitting way out there, twenty-three, twenty-four offerings. These, the larger table to the right just shows exactly what schools offer what. So you can see that there are some things that, there's a few things, like when you look at Mandarin, Chinese language, I mean, Berlin offers that, but they're the only school. The ones that we want to look at are the next slide.
But Lynn, why don't you say that, I think, I think actually that bodes well, because all those schools are larger than us, much larger, some are much larger. Greendale's probably the one that's closest to us.
Yeah, they're pretty close to us.
So, but Greenfield, Franklin, and New Berlin are sizily bigger than us. So obviously, we can always add more, but we have to do it proportionally, right?
Yep, and more is not always better.
Right.
I mean, I think the relevance has to be, you know, is it going to be useful to us? Is it going to be useful to our students? So this is just kind of giving us a snapshot of what's out there, but yeah, you're right. They are bigger districts, and not offering that much more than they are, so. And then you can just take a look at what's being offered on the next screen, please. These are the courses that are being offered most commonly that were not offered by us this year. So those are the ones that, you know, you want to take a look at, just because if a lot of other schools are offering something, and we are the only ones not, then those are maybe ones that we should pay attention to. As you can see, we've already attended to a handful of those, actually half those, by offering them here next year or the following year. So we talked a little bit last week, and, you know, Stephanie brought this up about, you know, the intent of, you know, what is our intent of our AP placement, our advanced placement coursework, the exams, what is our purpose with all of that? So we really have to establish, and help our students establish, why are they going to take the courses? What are they going to do with the courses? Is the exam important to them, is the exam not important to them? We looked last week at the discrepancy a little bit between the number of students that might enroll in the course as opposed to the ones that actually take the correlating exam. And we have to just decide, is that, does it matter, does it not matter? We talked about, do some universities not even care? Is it not worth it for students to take some of those exams? So that's all of the big questions that have to go in, and that's what some of our counseling department has to really take care of and pay attention to as we're moving forward. So the main intent right now is that opportunity for increased rigor, given our own high school experience, many students just take it because they want that crack at something that's more rigorous. They like the fact that it'll show on their transcript that they engage in that more rigorous content without necessarily having to take the exam. The other intent historically has been to try and streamline the college experience, to get some of those credits out of the way, get some equivalencies done, general education credits, and then condense that time and expense potentially.
Well, I did ask my daughter, I asked my daughter about, she takes three AP courses, two of she's taking a test in AP Psych, physics, she has no desire. And she said if she was going to use that as a moving forward profession, she probably would. But the other thing that I thought was really interesting, she said all her teachers that she asked encouraged the kids to do it. I know that was a question that we had talked about last time, do we encourage more? She said all, all three of hers encouraged her to do it, to take it. Now, you know, a hundred dollars might, or whatever, ninety, whatever it is, might be a factor for some people. So, you know, I don't know if we can underwrite that or whatever, but that is, I'm sure that's a deterrent for some.
Well, I can tell you that for the free and reduced, it's way.
Yes, I know, yep.
No, I'm just saying, but that's for people out there.
I'd like to stand up.
You accept that historically that number is underreported, and that's not necessarily a good indicator of those that might need financial help.
I'm not saying those are the only people that need it, I'm saying that there's one tool in place to help those that have been identified.
If those step forward.
Exactly.
And wants to take exams, or sometimes there's. So then we did some fun investigative work, and spent the better part of last Friday talking to colleges and universities, because we had talked about, you know, what is the relevance of the exams to the then higher education experience? So the first thing that we are showing you here is this table on the next slide that just talks about where we sent last year's scores, where students requested those scores we sent. So we've had some discussion amongst the board before about, you know, which colleges are we talking about here? Which ones are we including in our discussions or not? And you can see that the bulk obviously stayed pretty close to home and the university system in Madison, Milwaukee, and it funnels down from there. But it's a, it's a very good showing of a pretty wide diversity of students in general. And then what we, when we talk to people, we found out that when students take on those, take those advanced placement exams, and then they send their scores, they get two types of credit. They can get what's known as a general education credit, or a course equivalency credit. So there's, the definition between them is just basically the general ed is just that. You're not going to get specific credit toward the specific course, but the university or college will make a nod toward, you did this rigorous work, and it will replace some of the general ed coursework that you would have to do, so you can skip a general education requirement. The course equivalency credit gets a little bit more tied into if you're looking at a specific major, where there you can say, okay, you can skip this class, we're still going to show it on your transcript, you get credit for the class, you get three credits, four credits, whatever the class was worth. So you do actually get the specific class listed on your transcript without having to take the class. Interesting new learning for me was that, the little asterisk, asterisks on the bottom, is that the credits and equivalency is the decision of the department and not the college. And the colleges all said, we only decide if we will accept AP in the first place at all. We say to every single department, you decide the criteria and what scores you will or will not accept. So it was widely different for all of them. So they said, you know, our foreign language department is way different than our sciences, and way different than our humanities, and it was just like, oh goodness. So I did not know that. So when you're looking at all this information, once you get into a university that does say, yes, we'll acknowledge the AP, now you've got to go to all these different departments to figure out to what level they will actually buy it. The next graph is the number of universities of the ones that we pulled that will accept AP scores for credits or course equivalencies with a score of three or higher, which is the green bar, or four or higher, which is the blue bar. So the number running from bottom to top is the number of universities. So in biology, eight of these ten listed off to the right will do something for you if you have a score of three or higher, and then the ones in blue, so biology, so ten of them, if you have four or higher, they'll, you'll get some sort of credit.
And the ones that aren't up there don't?
No, this is just the ones that we asked, that's just, these are just the ones that we pulled, so, yeah. So the next one, we broke down by general content area. And this is, now, we just looked at the top universities where our students are sending those AP scores to. So we've got Madison, Milwaukee, Marquette, and MSOE. So you can look by class, so within math, you can see AP Calc, AP or AP Stats. In science, you can see AP Bio and Physics. And what they show you is the score earned on an AP exam, and then the credits that you can earn. And the asterisk says that that's the course equivalency. So if there's no asterisk, it's turning into just sort of a general ed replacement, so it gets you through some of the general ed requirements a little bit quicker. The asterisk thing is that it'll actually replace a course for you. MSOE was interesting, because they will give you course equivalency on your transcript, but you, they actually don't give you the credits. So you can skip the class, and you don't have to take this class, but you don't get credits for that class. They were the only ones that said that, so that was interesting as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's just that advanced place, it's sort of like, they use it as a placement test of where your starting point should be, rather than the credits piece.
Sometimes the credits, when you look at the score, it was, at first it was confusing when we were talking, where you get like a score of three, and then you can get four credits for that. And then if you've got a score of a five, you only got three credits, and I'm going, well, that doesn't make sense. But then we talked further, you're getting credit for a much higher level class that might not be as many credits, so you get fewer credits, but you're skipping over more stuff, so it's weird. So on the next slide, this is where we are right now. These are the things, we'd like to gather more of this information. This is more baseline information with our current practices of our AP teachers. So AP offers a bunch of training, they offer webinars every year. They really encourage teachers to go every year and get kind of recalibrated and get current on what's happening. They encourage teachers to become what's called AP readers, and actually read AP exams. And right now, we're going to get our AP teachers together and say, who is doing what? How often do we do it? Do you do it every year? Do you do it every couple of years? What's been the past practice there? So curious to know what's been done to this point. And then from that, maybe establish, do we want to be a bit more regular? If it's not regular, do we want to, you know, kind of set ourselves on schedules for that? You know, updating ourselves with AP if that's not in place right now. And then also curious to know, you know, how do we communicate, track and evaluate our AP opportunities for all of our students? We know that those opportunities are there, we're giving them to the students. Do we really keep track of, once they go and start using those AP credits? How are they doing post-secondaryally? And then the post-secondary data as it pertains to our student AP experience overall, that's something that we're talking about, you know, getting a little bit better snapshot of our students after they've left us, and what that's meant to them after we're here. And the last slide is just our ongoing questions that we are considering as we go, just, you know, what's our, what's our vision, you know, what are our desired outcomes? We already said, more might not be better. Do we care if people are, you know, taking that exam or not? Is that the ultimate goal? Is it really individualized per kid? You know, what are we, what are we expecting from ourselves and from our students?
So as we move forward to the dashboard, I think there's two ways of looking at it. We can, if the, I think we have to clearly communicate upfront if a student is taking it for the rigor of the course, or if they are taking it to truly replace credits. I think we could be doing a lot better job internally of matching them up with, where are you going? What's your intended major? Because if you're going to be a pharmacist, they may not take your AP Chem to replace it. They will have you take your chemistry there regardless if you do anything on it. That's something we need to do a better job in counseling our students as they're signing up for it. I think we can do some surveys afterwards. If, if their goal was to have a rigorous course, then the question is, did you feel this course was rigorous? this course was rigorous? And then as they graduate, did it meet, you know, did it help you prepare as you're finding yourself in post-secondary education? Then we've done what it set out to do. Or, if you took this class to avoid taking classes in college or to get so many credits, did it do that? So, we can have both of those purposes if, if we're going to go with these two, and then just survey to say at the end, did it meet that intent for you? Um, so that would be one way of collecting it. Or, we could do straight quantitative and just say, our goal is to have more classes, more tests, higher pass rate. I'm not saying we can't do that at the same time, but if we're big on what is the intention that a student is taking it? Um, you know, since Quinn, you've sort of publicly gave your example, you know, the goal for the one AP class for your daughter may have never been to take the test. It might be like, hey, I'm thinking of going into a medical thing, and if I can't handle AP physics, because, you know, there's a lot of, I just found, we just found out recently, I was at a meeting with all the greater Milwaukee area deans of schools of education, and we have a lot of people going into the health sciences, and there's a little bit of a disconnect from what they're experiencing in high school to what it's like in college. Um, everybody gets into organic chemistry, and that's sort of the, like, the floor drops out on a lot of people on that. And so, how do we then, you know, is, is it like, hey, if I can't handle AP chemistry in high school, I may not be able to handle the rigor of what, uh, you know, a medical profession might, with a bachelor's degree, might require? And that might be an okay thing, if that's the goal of it, to be able to test it. So, I think we have two ways of moving forward with AP scores. If we're gonna say, we're gonna allow for both reasons for kids to take them, and then, then the data collection is, did we meet the reason that that student and parent signed up for it versus just the pure score? Because as you tell each, if you have, I'm sure every student has a story about why they did or didn't take how many they did, it's not just pure numbers. And if we're interested in the story, then we have to do a story in terms of surveying them, why, you know, did it meet their goal? If her was like, hey, do I even like physics, or that's not my thing? I found that out. It may have met her goal. So, taking the test wasn't part of her goal, yet it could have been a success because she's now learned that much more about it or whatever. So, I think we just have to be aware of that, that there's more to it than just the quantitative part. And if our dashboard for what we're calling our redefining ready is gonna serve that purpose, then you're gonna have satisfied clients, if you will, that, that it met their need. Even though they didn't take that, it met maybe that student's need in taking it. So, now that we've dug into it a little bit more, have a little bit more data, have some more work to do, um, but I think it's more in our communication about this, 'cause I, I would guarantee you that the board is probably much more well-versed on our AP stuff than some of our teachers, counselors, or parents or students are right now, and that shouldn't be the case. So, we have work to do in terms of communication, so they have equally as, and come, come in with making very conscious decisions when they make their choices for course registrations and, and for your planning, really.
Thanks, Lynn.
Yeah, thank you, Lynn. Uh, next is D, School of Safety and Security.
Um, since we only met a week ago, I will give you a couple updates. We've been really focusing on preparing for our evacuation drill. So, we have all of our backpacks, all of our vests, and they're being distributed at the schools. Um, we've gone and visited our sites. We will probably, um, after we've visited some of our sites, um, we made a few modifications into the final evacuation sites for our drill. Um, we're gonna send out a letter to parents on Wednesday afternoon as we meet one more time with administrative team. We've worked in, uh, internal communication system that we'll be using, so, um, an intermediary when all students are out, we have a quick texting place where they can say, here's my name, all students are safe, because we need to have a record of that. Um, and then we're going to use the safety vests and the backpacks and that communication system when we do our May fire drills, because that's not just, it should be for all types of drills for safety, and that we get that. So, we're setting up some safety emails and some communication things internally, so we would have records of that instead of some of the, we found out, I think, just each building was doing it a little bit different. It seems to be, you know, for, for purposes right now, working for them, but when we all sat there and looked at all four of our buildings, the process was not the same, even on a fire drill for any of them. So, we need to just have some consistent procedures, um, because even if we had the fire department come to any of our buildings, there, there would be different things going on in how we're doing that. So, I think that was good on our part, that we were realizing some of that and going through some of that. So, that drill will happen next week, and we'll be able to report out and do a debrief with our, um, police and fire. So, we're gonna actually go through a command central, um, at that day too, which is something if there were a, a serious crisis in which all of the police have, myself, the two police chiefs, fire chiefs, get together in one place and sort of have what they call command central. So, we'll report out at our next board meeting how that drill went and what we learned, so.
Thank you.
Uh, tomorrow, if you didn't notice, the last thing about that is the governor is introducing how you sign up for all the grants and whatever that's being announced tomorrow, the process for it. My understanding is that they need, they will be due by the end of May, and it will be a very quick turnaround on those things. So, that's coming out tomorrow, so we'll get the details on what the form and the grant application looks like. Just to let you know and anybody who might be watching is, there is district matching funds required. It's not a hundred percent that they will fund. So, while it's a hundred million dollars and, and it is dollars, my understanding is year one, the district has to put in 25% of what you're asking for. So, when we look at budget and we talk about that, we have to understand that whatever we might put forward in a grant, um, we will have, 25% of that has gotta come out of our operating budget somewhere else. So, if we say, hey, we're gonna request a hundred thousand dollars out of the grant, we're gonna have to come up with at least twenty-five thousand dollars out of it from somewhere else in order to even be eligible for that. So, I just wanna be very clear. Um, and then it gets higher input as each of the next two following years come up. So, uh, we will share that out, we will probably, before we move forward with that, bring it to the board on, um, before we have to submit it, because we want the board to be fully aware, because it will impact our budget, um, and the things that we decide to prioritize to put in there. So, um, just an FYI in the grant piece of it too, so.
All these strings attached, huh?
Money is rarely free.[1308.72][1308.72](laughing).
Good, thank you. And then E, SWSA report, anything, Quinn?
Uh, yeah, we, uh, met, uh, this past month, and we had, uh, we had a discussion from our lobbyists in Madison about, about school safety and coming grants, and obviously, that was, uh, two weeks ago, so a lot has changed since then. Uh, we also had the schools, rescined school district and, uh, committee, uh, committee called Higher Expectations, community-based, uh, committee with all kinds of different stakeholders involved to get things, to do better in rescine. I mean, it, it, um, the gentleman that is the chair of it is phenomenal, um, and, and it's working, um, but slowly, but it's working. Uh, I'm not sure that something like that would, would work here. I don't know, with three different municipalities, it'd be, it'd be challenging. It was, it was a really good presentation and opened your mind to, to different things. Uh, the May 8th meeting, this just shows that this membership is, has, has some pull, really does. We're having the, like, gentleman's name, name is Glenn Rayburg, he's the acting director of the school of, office of the school of safety. So, this guy's gonna be one of the guys handing out the grants, and I mean, he's not, I mean, he, he's, he's in the thick of it, you know? So, and he's gonna be there, and we're gonna be asked some questions back and forth. I don't have any, I don't, I just go and listen, but, uh, I'm sure our, our, other members will. So, I mean, it, it, it's very impressive, the people that they bring in for speakers, whether it be Senator Olson, who's the co-chair of the.
Education of the Senate.
There you go. Uh, you know, uh, Ms. Darling, who's finance, and it, it is, it's very impressive. So, I, I look forward to that meeting, and, uh, that's it.
Great. And, and again, if you have any questions on where the meeting's held, when they are, ask Quinn or Lisa, and they can get you that information, but you said it's a second Tuesday every month.
At the Holbrook, uh, Administration Building.
From seven thirty to nine typically.
Hundred and thirty-fifth and Hope.
Okay. And is it pre-legislation required for that, or do you just show up? You can just show up, unless there's a special speaker.
Yeah.
Like, if the governor ever comes or something like that, they usually have you, just so they make sure it's enlarged enough, but most of the time it's just show up, yep.
Right, thank you, Quinn. Um, F is insurance rates, would you like?
Just, just quickly, so the board knows where we're at with this, is we have open enrollment next week for our, um, staff. Um, dental rates will be staying the same, uh, vision, uh, which is voluntary for our staff, staying the same. Health insurance. So, we are, we are increasing rates by approximately seven percent across, um, we're essentially trying to get to a number that's being projected, right? For self-funded, we're trying to get to essentially three point eight million dollars. Twelve point six percent of that paid for by the staff, remaining eighty-seven point four by the district. The, um, that, that magic number brings us to about a seven percent increase in our rates. That, that increase is not going to be even across our tiers. In other words, single employee plus spouse, employee plus child and family, that's not gonna be an equal spread of seven percent. Um, and, and the reason for that is that some tiers are subsidizing other tiers. Specifically, um, the employee and spouse, um, tier has been subsidized for years. We took a step to kind of try to mitigate that last year, and this year, we're just gonna take that final step and get it done. That, that group is gonna see a significant increase in rates. Family and employee, or excuse me, family and employee and children will see the seven percent increase. Single will actually be decreasing. So, um, just wanted you to be aware that, that, those are the changes, there's no design changes this year, but I do feel really much better than last year about the number that's fitting into the budget and, and where that trend is, and, um, I feel good if that matters.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, on to eleven, items for future consideration, does anyone have any? Uh, one thing that, uh, came up, it actually relates to board member announcements, is a potentially removing board member from the title of board member announcements, and maybe it generally is just announcements. So, if, if Kathy or, or Mike or Lisa, someone wants to make an announcement during that point, it'd be an announcement, announcement from anyone, not just a board member. Um, and we can't discuss it now, um, something we're going to look at trying. If anyone has strong feedback against it, please reach out to me, otherwise, we'll give it a shot next month, see how it works, and go from there. Obviously, we're all lining up to give announcements during it, so it could cut into our time. Anything else? Any other announcement?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I do. So, get this, we're at the, uh, Booster Club Casino Night, and they, and they have this great idea, they asked the superintendent to come pull the two thousand dollar, you know, fifty-fifty winner. She cups her own name and pulls her own name out of there to win a top prize. How is that? Lisa Olson picks Lisa Olson. Wow.
So, so what, what did you do with the winnings?
What did you buy us?
I.
New chairs?
I didn't buy anything, no, I did not, no, I can't.
She donated them back.
I did, I did.
Too obvious a plan.
Any other, any other announcements?
See, that's why we may wanna not, um, leave it open to anybody, because, you know, Gar could come in, want to sell some real estate, right? You never know. So, just a thought.
Oh, uh, one other announcement, um, Fourth of July parades. So, um, we've been asked to have a presence in the parade, right? So, um, those big magnets that say, you know, Whitnell School Board, whatever, we're gonna put it on a car. Um, if anyone has a really nice car in the district that they'd like to drive in the parade.
Which parade?
Greenfield and Hills Course, so both. Um, I believe we have someone in the district that's gonna be a grand marshal in the Greenfield parade, I don't know.
And I did not call my own name on that, just like.
Uh, that ballot box or stuff, you know, but, um, so, i- if you have, if someone has a car, convertible, whatever it is, let us know. Um, but what I'd like to do is, instead of maybe us being in the car waving, if we have, maybe we can think of a way to recognize students or for something creative to put people in the, in the car. Obviously, you'll say Whitnell School Board on the side, but it doesn't necessarily have to be us, so, any ideas? That's a good base. Um, but, I mean, if we all wanna sit in there and wave, we can, but I'd rather have kids there who we can recognize for whatever it is. So, think about it. We obviously have some time, they're gonna put a car in there, so anyone that has a car that's interested in driving in it with a big sticker on the side, um, please do, and then we'll, we'll discuss this as we go further. Okay? Anything else? Okay, so then I'll take a motion.